Good evening, everybody. I apologize. I hate starting meetings late. This will be the only meeting that will start late in four years, I promise. Because I'm not a big fan of this. So it is 7:05, so I'm going to call the order. The meeting for Monday, November 26th at 2018 at 7:05 PM. I would like to acknowledge that we acknowledged that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Callwood Salish people, looking for a motion for approval of the agenda. Moved by Counselor Kobayashi, seconded by Counselor Parkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Public participation? Is there any public who would like to participate? No? All right. Then I will move on to Mayor's message. I have many things to tell you. And first of all, you will see that council chambers are completely set up differently. This is an experiment that we're sort of trying out to see how it goes. One of the courses that we took really stood out in my mind, and it was that, you know, council meetings are business meetings. They're not plays. They're not meant to be directed towards the public. The public is here to participate and to listen. But this is really the dialogue between council, and so I really like the idea that council is actually looking at each other when they're talking. So this was part of the reason it's been changed to this. As well, you'll see staff are on the sides now, and part of that rationale also is because staff are not part of council. They do not sit. There was sort of a vision that they were part of the council when it was one big table, and that staff are actually here to support, but that this is actually a council meeting, and so that we'll be focusing just on council. As well, the meeting is going to run a little differently this evening, and we're going to sort of play around with that a little bit, too, and I'm going to explain to you how the meeting's going to look a little different than what you're used to running in the past. But before I do that, I just want to highlight a couple of things. We -- council has been working incredibly hard this last month. It's -- we've had three, four -- we had, I think, close to five trainings that we did. We had four hours of legal that we worked together. We did two days of strategic planning together as a group. We learned sort of municipal politics 101. We took two days of courses on that. So it's been a real learning curve, and so although it might look as though we're just sort of starting, this council has been working dramatically and very hard in the last month, and I really appreciate the amount of energy and investment and time that you've all put into it, so thank you. As well, I want to do a couple of quick announcements, just to let some of the events that are happening around town. The Royal Bay Secondary 10,000 Nights Food Drive is happening Wednesday, December 5th, and I'm hoping people will participate in that. And especially if high school students come to your door, please consider donating some food. The Callwood Christmas Light Up is happening Thursday, December 6th. Callwood Branch Off dates for this fall are happening both on December 1st and December 15th. And New Year's Day 2019 Polar Bear Swim, run by Counselor Logan, is going to be happening January 1st. I'm not sure exactly the time, but it is happening on the 1st. The final thing that I'm excited to tell, and to be honest, some of council will only be hearing this for the very first time, but it's occurred in the last hour that I've received confirmation from Mitzi Dean, who is our MLA, that $24 million has been announced to build affordable indigenous housing in the municipality of Callwood, and it's going to be 124 units happening at 342 Whale Road, which is the famous hole on Whale. So it's amazing that we're going to be getting 124 units built in there in the next little That I just learned within the last hour. Confirming it all. So, starting on November 26th, which is this evening, on tonight's agenda, we are going to try as well to stay focused on council. So I am not going to be referring to staff to introduce topics. I will be having an expectation that all the council has read through the agenda items, have read the reports, and that the reports are really the most thorough description, so it makes no sense for staff to sort of summarize the report that they've already written. I'll be doing a quick, two-line introduction of each one, so that everybody sort of understands where we're coming from, and then hopefully sort of move forward through the council agenda sort of effectively and efficiently. So it will look a little different this evening, but hopefully it will make sense to everybody. Finally, I will look to council. If council has anything that they would like to add in addition to the Mayor's message? Anybody have anything? Okay. Then we will move right on to adoption of the minutes of the inaugural meeting of November 5th. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Logan. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Looking for three sets of minutes to be received. The regular meeting of October 9th, the special meeting of October 16th, and the minutes of the Special Emergency Planning Committee meeting of September 19th. Oh, yeah, Counselor Day.
Thank you. I will move adoption, but I have one small amendment to the minutes of, sorry, October 9th. On page 10, it says that I advise that I'm opposed to bylaw 1742, but it just doesn't make sense, the wording. I'm not sure if I didn't make sense that night or what happened, but I can sum it up shortly by saying that the reason I was opposed to that bylaw is because a proposal can be significantly changed without council or public engagement.
Okay. Thank you. We can -- we'll have that added to the minutes. So, thank you. Counselor Day has moved it. I need a seconder. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Moving on to correspondence. 5.1, Letter from Walk On Victoria, Making Callwood a Walkable City. Walk On Victoria wants to know if there is interest in a possible future collaboration with the city, such as participating in active transportation or pedestrian infrastructure committees, or partnering on pedestrian-focused projects. It's the will of council. Counselor Day.
Thank you. For many years, we had the Cycling Advisory Committee, who provided input on cycling infrastructure, and what happened is, as we were considering cycling infrastructure, inevitably pedestrian infrastructure also came up. And also with the Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues, accessible transportation had a fair number of interactions with cycling and pedestrian infrastructure as well. And it was proposed by the Cycling Advisory Committee that we become an active transportation committee, and through the active transportation committee, then we could look at all three things, both pedestrian infrastructure, cycling infrastructure, and accessible curb cuts, et cetera. Now, I'm not sure what has happened to our active transportation committee. It seems to have disappeared when we considered our transportation master plan. We had a hierarchy for transportation, which was pedestrian first, cycling second, and at the bottom of the list was cars. So I'd like to ask if we are considering an active transportation committee of any kind, or if it has any place in this, because this group, while I think important throughout the region, it is certainly important that we have local public input and local knowledge about local issues and what would make them better. At the Association of Vancouver Island Coast Communities last year, there was a presentation by Sport for Life, talking about youth health and the fact that many health concerns are showing up earlier in children's lives because of the lack of activity, so transportation choices have a great deal to do with that.
Counselor Kobayashi?
Yes. I have a lot of concerns about this, because first of all, if you try to do any homework and you go to the website, there's just insufficient information. And to me, it's -- to me, the way I look at it, it's just another lobby group. And then I noticed that in some of the comments, there's a lobby group with 300-plus members, it says. I don't even know what municipalities have joined up to this, but here they're making comments about dictating to us as a city that we should be running a sidewalk from Royal Bay all along the Chosen and up to Suk Road. Yes, I'd love to do that, but is that our priority? And so I don't like that someone else dictating what we're going to be doing and what we're going to be doing with our money. And so, as far as I'm concerned at this point in time, I don't -- I think there's just insufficient information, and I think we'd be jumping the gun. It's just like a lot of special interest groups that set up. They tend to get you aboard, and before you know it, you're committed to doing something that you never, ever intended in the first place. So until there's more due diligence done on this, I wouldn't support it.
Thank you. I'll come back to -- oh, sure.
I just wondered if I could get an answer to my question? My question was, are we going to have an active transportation committee, or is it envisioned?
Well, that will be the will of this council. So if this council wishes to have an active transportation, we can definitely do that. Counselor Parkinson?
I think I'd go along the same lines as Counselor Kobayashi here. Looks like an interesting group. Huge supporter of walking and cycling and curb cuts for disabilities, all important stuff, but right now, I'm not sure we need to be part of a larger, bigger lobby group to implement any of those things within the city. So I would say, interesting to know they're out there, and maybe keep tabs on them, but I wouldn't rush into doing any more than that at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Baxter?
I heard the words there, "just another lobby group," and I don't think it was meant to be complimentary. And I'd just like to speak in defense of lobby groups, because if you're a group of citizens who want to convey to the council that something should be changed, that's how you do it. And I think council probably usually welcomes lobby groups, although we don't always necessarily agree with them or find that it's going to fit into the priorities.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm going to do is bring back focus to this letter. What is the will of this council to do with this letter? Counselor Jensen? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Logan. Any discussion? Counselor Day?
No.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Sorry, were you opposed, or were you -- or you're just discussion? Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we establish an active transportation committee for Callwood, to give us information about what citizens in Callwood would like, or what could make a difference to active transportation within Callwood.
All right. Thank you. May I have a seconder? Are you seconding? Counselor Baxter? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Baxter. Discussion? Counselor Baxter?
I think we're probably thinking on this council more along the lines of task forces, particular issue forces, and there's no reason why this particular issue couldn't be tackled by such a body if we were to come up with terms of reference.
Sure.
At least some draft conceptual terms of reference. So I seconded this for discussion, because I didn't want it to just die there.
Yep.
But I think I will actually vote against it, but not to prevent this from happening, but just so that we take some time and come up with some draft terms of reference.
And I can -- I certainly can take that as direction. I will be putting together a whole bunch of task forces in the next little while, and so I can certainly add that to it. But I certainly want to not be dictating, and hence the reason I commented that it's the will of this council and not my will to do that. So, any other discussion? Counselor Day?
Just to add that the previous Cycling Advisory Committee did draft some terms of reference that might be useful to you, that I'm sure staff have.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Day, do you feel comfortable withdrawing that and leaving it with the task force, or would you like to vote?
No, I'm fine with that. I just didn't want it to go nowhere.
Yeah. Thank you. Then we'll withdraw that motion and move on to 5.2. Request for a council motion to ratify and confirm the appointments of the current CRD Board Representatives to the CRD Regional Housing Corporation Board. The CRD is asking council to appoint the city CRD Board Rep, which is myself, to serve on the Capital Regional Housing Corporation, which will put the Conflict of Interest Exemption Regulations.
So moved, your worship?
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Logan, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 5.3, A Letter from Maureen Sawah. She's the CEO of the Greater Victoria Public Library regarding the Major Asset Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund expenditure approval for the Wanda Fuka Branch Library Building, which is a roof replacement replenishment. And basically, the Greater Victoria Public Library Chief Executive Officer is seeking a council motion to approve the expenditure of funds from the Major Asset Maintenance Reserve for a roof replacement or refurbishment of the Wanda Fuka Branch. And if council is supportive of it, I do actually have a motion that I could suggest. Oh, excuse me. I turned it off. So if council's supportive of it, the motion that is suggested is that council approve expenditures of funds from the Major Asset Maintenance Reserve for the purposes of a roof replacement refurbishment at the Wanda Fuka Branch of the Greater Victoria Public Library, as outlined in the November 22nd, 2018 GVPL letter.
Second.
Sorry, I can't move it, so.
Okay. I'll so move.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Baxter. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those -- oh, sorry.
Quick question, which is, of course, the best time to replace a roof is right before it leaks. Has there been indications that it is the time?
I'll look to staff.
Your worship, there is certainly an urgency to get the roof replaced. I'm not sure if it's leaking yet, but there has been an assessment, and they're concerned that they need to get on with it.
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome. Counselor Jensen?
And I think, just to be clear, in reading the letter, my understanding is this is nothing out of pocket for our community whatsoever. This is all from their capital reserve fund. They just need our authorization?
Yes and no. So what happens is, and with being Chair of the library, I know this intimately, the city of Callwood, in addition to this Langford Highlands and the Chosen, so everybody except U-Royal, pays into a fund every year for the maintenance of -- or for the building. So it is taxpayer money, but it's been budgeted over a long period of time, so we put in a set amount every year exactly for this thing, so that there isn't a large capital expenditure. So this was planned 10 years ago, and we fund that. And just so that, for the benefit of the new council, just so that you're aware, the way the library system works is, anything outside, anything that has walls, anything that's a building, is the responsibility of the municipalities, and anything inside, so the books, the staffing, all of that, becomes a shared responsibility among all its partners. So we are, as a municipality, we are responsible for the Wanda Fuka Branch, whereas downtown Victoria is responsible for both the James Bay Branch and the downtown branch. So they would -- they're -- if, when you're going to be hearing in the next little while that there's a real push to replace the central branch, that will have no financial ramifications for Callwood, even though we belong to GVPL. Counselor Kobayashi?
Just a quick question, too, a clarification. Either my math is bad, or there's something hidden in that letter, but it shows us with net $318,000 and some odd dollars, and yet the roof replacement is $346,000. So where's the shortfall come from?
I'll look to staff.
Your worship, the -- if I recall the conversation, because we did have this conversation with the four CAOs, with Maureen, but it was about six weeks ago, and I'm pretty sure there was -- the contribution has not been recognized for year-end for the library yet, so there'll be enough funds.
Counselor Day?
Sorry, and I just wanted clarification. I think I was thinking when you read out the motion, and there was two options. One was for refurbishment, and one was for total roof replacement, and I wanted to clarify what the wording was for in the motion.
Yeah, the motion actually reads both. They asked, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I'm guessing a little bit on this one, but my understanding is, they're not going to know until they start ripping off some stuff, so they don't know if they're going to have to completely refurbish or replace it, or if they're going to be able to get away with refurbishing it. So they're looking for direction to do both, and whatever's obviously the most cost-effective is the direction they would go. Staff, am I correct?
And just to that end, since we're changing a lot of our procedures here, I think it would be very beneficial if we could put up on the screen when we have motions, so that people can see what we're actually voting on, because sometimes it's hard to multitask at the table.
Thank you for the suggestion. We'll -- staff will take that and see what they can do with it. I will call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Moving on to new business. 6.1.1, Planning Tech, Request for Development Permit Fee Reductions. There are two property owners with projects in the pre-application stage, which were affected by the increased application fee required in the new city's OCP. They are requesting a reduction in their application fee to reflect the fees designated in the 2008 OCP. Questions to staff? Anybody have anything? Then I will look for -- oh, Stuart?
I guess my only thought when I read this is, it looks like there's more than $500 worth of time and effort gone into reducing these fees by $500. I don't have an issue with it. It seems sensible. I can support the motion. I just kind of think we've got to look for a little better ways to do it than to go to this length.
Thank you. Well said. So I am --
Just another comment on this. So obviously, they're the obvious ones that came out. Are there any other fees that we've brought in because of the new 2018 OCP? Because I noticed that we have a whole gamut of new permits, it looks like, in the OCP. So is that going to -- the same principle apply that we don't apply those? Because we have, like, eight different permits you can possibly -- you can potentially get, depending on where you live.
Thank you. I'll go to our Director of Developmental Services.
Thank you very much. Through your worship, the capture here is the fact that these properties weren't included in the -- in two different development permit layers, and that captures is that factor of time coming forward, pre and post. Everything going forward now should be fully captured and explained, that they're in front of two development permit layers, as opposed to the old OCP that was one. There is a synergy in fees, that if you apply for more than one variance, there's actually a cost reduction as you move forward. That wasn't captured here by the second DP requirement here.
Can I answer your question? Or do you have a second?
Just one additional question. So Brent, is there -- are you going to have a nice little checklist, like, if I'm a citizen and I want to put a suite in my house, for example? Are you just going to have a checklist so that I understand, like, all the permits I have to get? Is that where you're trying to go? Or if I want to build a carriage house and to have a checklist of, so I know, here are all my permits, and there's no surprises?
We are attempting to approve our handouts to the public, to bring about that higher framework of understanding for both time and cost. That is our goal. We're right now pre-development of those, and so we're just trying to communicate that out as actively as we can.
Counselor Jensen?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we can structure a motion that may capture any unforeseen circumstances that come forward, so they don't -- people don't have to wait a month or two, if it can be worded along the lines of, you know, this and other similar situations, so that staff have a green light to deal with them as they come up. I'm not sure if that would help or not.
I will look to staff. Would that be helpful, or is that necessary, or what would be best?
Your worship, I think -- I'm winging it a little bit here, but I think you could probably structure the motion to state that anybody who was caught during the transition from old OCP to new OCP, that would result in them having to do perhaps two development permit applications that might have previously been only one, that we would apply this particular fee reduction.
Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion along those lines if you'd like me to phrase something, or if do we have a handle on the free deal?
Are we good with wording? Or staff are saying we're good with wording. So moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Discussion? Counselor Baxter, and then Counselor Day?
I'd just like to say that in future, around this table, when we're considering bylaws that increase fees, it would be possible to build into the bylaw that, you know, the fee be announced as changed, and then any permits in process be given three months, six months, whatever's appropriate, to complete at the old fee. So we could just think about that when we're approving bylaws.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
I think that's a good suggestion, and I understand the desire of council to, you know, not require more reports be done, but at the same time, I am quite uncomfortable with us crafting motions without any wording of our own. It's not our motion if you don't know how to say what we mean. So I'm not comfortable with motions arising on the table that are on the fly like this. I think we should craft our own language, and that is our responsibility as council.
And to be fair, Mr. Mayor, I expect that my motion is going to be read back to me, and I can offer amendment where appropriate at that moment.
All right. Thank you. Counselor, just before, I'll just make sure there's nobody else. Nobody else? Okay. Counselor Baxter?
It doesn't seem to me that this particular -- the motion to capture any others that come up is red-hot urgent, so we could just take this as notice of motion and have finished wording ready for next meeting.
All right. Well, again, it's the will of this council.
I did make the motion. I'll stand behind that, and I think that we can probably streamline this to some degree.
All right. I will -- I'll go back to staff. Our corporate officer. Or who's corporate officer? Her? Not you? Okay. Pat, could you read back what the motion's going to read?
I will try. That any -- I did wordsmith a little bit, so we're saying that any applicant caught during the transition of the old OCP to the new OCP that resulted in two development permits, which might have previously only been one, that we apply this fee reduction.
Okay. I'll look to Counselor Jensen.
That captures the essence of what I'm trying to convey, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? All right. Moving on to 6.2.1, Memorandum from the Manager of Corporate Communications Regarding Council/Council Event, the City of Callwood and Esquimalt Nation. An application for funding to support a dinner between Esquimalt Nation Council and Callwood Council requires a resolution that confirms support for the proposed activities and to direct city staff to provide overall grant management. Questions? Questions? If there is no questions, then I will look for some sort of motion from this council. Thank you. Yeah, as -- thank you. Seconder? So moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Parkinson. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. You guys are just humming along here. 6.2.2, Report from the Manager of Building Inspections and Bylaw Services Regarding Priorities for Processing Valid Bylaw Complaints. A new bylaw complaints procedure has been developed to process valid bylaw complaints. We do have our Director of Bylaw Services. I'm hoping... Did I get that? What... Sorry, Paul, I think I got your title wrong.
I'm the Manager of Building Inspections and Bylaw Services.
Yeah, I was just not close at all. My apologies. I took a risk. All right. Are there any questions to our manager? Counselor Baxter, then Counselor Day?
I just wonder if this new policy will be published on the website, so that people can be sure how these things will be handled?
I would... Oh, she just left. I would assume so, looking at... Oh, Paul? Sorry.
Through your worship, all the policies and procedures that are being prepared will be available to the public.
And just reflecting Counselor Baxter's question, though, would it... Will... Do you know if it'll be on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, it will. Okay. Just... Sorry. Anything else?
I meant that to imply that we would actually, you know, announce it as, A, something good we've done, and B, so that people are aware there's been a change.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying. Sorry. Okay. Understood. I will... I'll ensure that curse happens. Thank you. Counselor Day, then Counselor Logan, then Counselor Kobayashi.
Thank you. There is no form of policies that I could find on our website, so I would like to know what has changed in this new policy from how we were doing things before.
I will look to staff. I'm not going to answer that question.
Through your worship, at this moment, that we're in preparation of the policy and procedures, so it's not occurred onto the website. But the intent is, once they've been formalized, then that information will be part of the access to that information through the website.
So my question was, what has changed?
Then my answer would be nothing at this stage.
So there's nothing different in this policy than how you were operating previously?
Oh, sorry. You said the policy. I thought you were referring to the information that's being public... Available to the public.
No, I'm referring to the policy.
So the policy's being changed. So what we're doing is setting priorities or asking council to set their priorities on how they deal with complaints. The policy that was originally adopted by council, which is Appendix A, doesn't deal fully with all the aspects of how we're dealing with complaints. You know, it doesn't talk about investigations, what the purpose is. The procedure that's been developed has been in accordance with the Ombudsman's report that was prepared back in 2016. So it's meeting all the criteria that was established back in there.
So how it's changing is that it's identifying what our priority will be? In other words, it was previously complaint-driven. It's still complaint-driven, but when we act on things is based on what the risks are to the community?
Through your worship, that's correct.
Okay. And just currently, there are no policies on our website, so that you are aware. There are none.
All right. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the manager, is there the opportunity for the city itself to file a complaint in that? Can the city, rather than relying on somebody from the public to formally write a complaint, but the city can be proactive in dealing with what could be an irritant or have a significant impact on the community, as a community standard? I'll give you an example. Callwood Creek Park. Workers from the Belmont Development are parking in the parking spots for the park on Sunridge Valley Drive and on Brittany Drive, so squeezing out Callwood residents from being able to utilize the park. So sometimes it's... Although it's an irritant, people are busy and don't always formalize it, or don't have time to formalize it, but would expect the city to take some sort of remedial action. So would this policy capture that?
Through your worship, there is the ability within the procedure to... For the city to initiate an investigation.
Thank you. Counselor Kobayashi, and then Counselor Jensen.
Just looking at... When I read your priorities, just the one that wasn't on there was damage to private property, you know, assets of private property assets. Is that covered under... Is that four, then? Is that priority four? Like, it's not there.
Damage to public property is...
Or private. I'm talking private property.
On private property would be more a civil situation, as opposed to a complaint that the city would receive.
Okay. What I'm specifically talking about, let's say we have a tree bylaw right now, right? And the tree bylaw says that, you know, if it's a certain, you know, diameter tree, you can't cut it without permission, or, you know... We have bylaws that prevent us from doing that, but if it's actually damaging the person's private property, moving fences, break... You know, going into their septic system, is there... That's what I consider private property. You know, it's our bylaw that's preventing people from doing something that's damaging their private assets, their private property assets.
Through your worship, I don't... If it was a municipal tree, following your example, if it was a municipal tree damaging private property, then that person could complain or bring it to council to have that situation rectified. If it's a tree on a... If it's a private tree on a private property, then the bylaw permits that person to remove I don't see how this would be a complaint.
If I can just jump in. I think that was... I'm using this as just as an example, what you're talking about. But if it's a private citizen that's impacting another private citizen, that's a civil matter that we don't get involved in. So in using your example, if my tree roots were plugging up your septic field, you would have the right to take civil action against me. We would not be involved in that at all.
Thank you. Are you good? Okay. Then Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, your worship, and a question for staff. I've read through this report, and I think it clearly specifies a sort of a triage approach to complaints. Something that I don't see in here, and I wonder if it may be addressed somewhere else or in a further report, is a customer service approach to these complaints. I can tell you, having gone through a recent campaign period, that I heard many a story about unreturned messages, unreturned emails, or basically no action taken and no explanation. So I wonder if this is the right venue or the time for a discussion surrounding that. It doesn't... It certainly doesn't specify in the reports anywhere what the obligation on staff is once a complaint is received, whether there's a timely response, whether there's... You know, if it's assigned to a staff member, how it's treated in that context.
I will look to staff. I have a tendency to not want to drift too far away from the original goal of what we're looking at tonight, but looking at staff, that would... Go ahead, Ian. I saw you take a deep breath, so I was like, oh, this is going to be good.
Nope. Nope. Paul, our manager of Building Inspection and Bylaw Services, has done a fair bit of work in this area. It's just not all hitting council. There's procedures and there's policies. So what's before you tonight is the stuff that we can't make decisions on. It's the policy issues around setting priorities on how calls are prioritized. There is a whole new procedure that Paul has also been working on that isn't finalized yet, but when it is, it will be made public. It'll be on the website when it's done. That does get into the timeliness of response and how we'll respond and what we'll respond with in some circumstances, because we are restricted at some times in what we actually release. So that's all procedural issues, and we just haven't finalized those yet. And we can't finalize them until we actually have some of these policy issues resolved.
I also think that this might be a very good discussion to do, sort of in a task force type of opportunity. So it would also give an opportunity for the public to contribute to any type of discussions around service levels and expectations on time in that. So I have a tendency to stay away from it this evening, if that's all right, Counselor Jensen? Thank you, your worship. Oh, sorry. In a second, Stewart. Go ahead. Oh, no, no. Sorry. Counselor Jensen still has the... You're done. It's right. Good job. Counselor Parkinson?
I guess somewhat following on from what Dean was saying, I'm just wondering, is the bylaw infractions and the list of them public? So do people know how many bylaw infractions are currently being investigated and where they fit in this sequence of priorities?
I cannot answer that, but I would go to staff again.
That information is not currently available.
It's not. It's not.
Not to the public.
Might be a good question for the task force.
Yeah, there you go. Counselor Day?
Sorry. Just through the discussion, something came up for me in reading the list of what the highest priority is. Fourth, so second from the bottom, is the impact on the complainant. So in the example that the Chief Administrative Officer gave of a tree blocking someone's septic system, if that was a city tree, say on a boulevard, that was somehow rendering their septic system unworkable, I would say that that impact on the complainant is very large and would warrant a different designation than this describes. So, you know, if it's impacting the livability, some of the most difficult circumstances that I've seen council have to deal with are those where people are, you know, having difficulties with their septic system and needing to hook up the sewer, for example. And they've reported out that they are not able to shower at home, they're not able to do dishes, they can't do their laundry. Basically, they almost can't live in their home, but that would be number four on our list. And I'm concerned that that would be the case. So I... Just having heard some issues, I wonder if we're ready to move forward with this, or if we need more time.
Okay. If I could just say one thing, and then I'll go to Counselor Logan. I hear what you're saying, Counselor Day. I guess my concern would be... Not my concern, but my statement would be, you know, if you considered number one first, the health, safety, and security of the public, using your example, that wouldn't... There wouldn't... There isn't any. So we would move down to the second thing. Is there damage to the environment? That would be the second thing we would want to protect. There isn't any. So then we would move down to the third one, which is the impact on the community, and then we get down to the impact of the complainant. I don't think the top three would necessarily stop the fourth. It's just that, from that priority list, that we work down from the community down to the individual versus focusing on the individual first and then having it cost the community something. So I don't know... I believe the priorities are in the right level, but answering that question, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Logan. Staff?
Your worship, the example was really to demonstrate what is a civil matter. If it was a municipal tree, it is not a bylaw enforcement issue. It's simply a phone call to our Public Works Department or to our Engineering Department stating that one of our municipal trees is plugging a septic field. So it would be handled differently than through bylaw enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, your worship. You know, I'm just afraid that we're getting too far into the weeds, and the recommendations are based on professional advice, and I think we need to trust our staff to be able to make the judgment in terms of what category each complaint falls into. So I'm satisfied with the recommendations that staff are making, and I'm... If the motion's not on the table, I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Logan, the recommendation. I need a second, or Counselor Parkinson? Thank you. I should have done that first, and then had the discussion. My mistake. My apology. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Day opposed? Moving on to... Oh, now you guys get to hear me talk for a bit. Okay. The 6.2.3, Regarding Council Member Appointments to Various Boards, Commissions, and Committees. I'm hoping for ease. I would just like to read out the actual recommendation, because I think this recommendation, it's quite long, but I think it's pertinent, and then we can move from there. And hopefully, after I read it out, somebody will move it, and then we'll second it, and then we can have any further discussion. So the recommendation is that council approve the follow appointments. That Counselor Michael Baxter be appointed to serve as a member of the Emergency Planning Committee for a term commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Doug Kobayashi be appointed to serve on the Board of the Greater Victoria Public Library and the Wanda Fuka Branch for a term commencing on January 1, 2019, and expiring December 31, 2019. That Counselor Cynthia Day be appointed to serve as a member of the Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues. And Counselor Dean Jensen be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Stuart Parkinson be appointed to serve as the member to the Pioneer Cemetery Board of Trustees. And Counselor Michael Baxter be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Cynthia Day be appointed to serve as a member of the School District Liaison Committee. And Counselor Gordy Logan be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Stuart Parkinson be appointed to serve as a member of the St. John's, the Baptist Cemetery Board of Trustees. And Counselor Michael Baxter be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Cynthia Day be appointed to serve as a member... Oh, thank you. Treaty Advisory Committee. And that Mayor Rob Martin be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. That Counselor Cynthia Day be appointed to serve as a member of the Victoria Family Youth Court and Youth Justice Committee. And Counselor Stuart Parkinson be appointed to serve as the alternate member, with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. And that Counselor Dean Jensen be appointed to serve as a council representative for the West Shore Chamber of Commerce. And Counselor Michael Baxter be appointed to serve as the alternate, representing with both terms commencing on appointment to December of 2019. May I have a mover and seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Kobayashi, seconded by Counselor Logan. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Keep taking this off. Oh, we need 6.2.4, which is the appointment to the CRD Water Commission and the Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Commission council members, and it's a four-year term. I will just read out the recommendation quickly. The council appoint... Oh, no. Sorry. This is... No, forgive me. I'm going to look at staff. I thought I had already appointed... Oh, what? Oh, I didn't read that. Oh, I didn't read the name. Oh, I didn't read that, oh, I didn't read the notes. Sorry. The appointments of directors to the CRD Regional Water Commission and Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Commission require public notice of the opportunity to comment on the appointments before they are made. The recommendation should have indicated that these appointments will be considered on the December 10th meeting, and notice will be a point, will be posted. So this evening, I'm looking to you, Pat, this evening, do you still need that recommendation that's before council?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor, and apologies to council. When we were writing our report, we were thinking in two different ways. One was bringing it to night's meeting to let you know that we do need to do the Water Commission appointments, but we always give public notice at a council meeting to say we're going to bring it to the next meeting. But when we're writing the report, and, or I was writing the report, got to the end where we do the recommendations, I got all excited about it and dove right into directing appointment of the commissioners for the two Wanda Fuka commissions. But actually, this evening, we don't need a recommendation at all, we're just giving the public notice that we're going to be doing that at the December 10th council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Excellent. There are...
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to receive that report or anything like that?
No, we don't need anything. We're good.
Just, just one clarification for me. It, it says there that the, the directors of the CRD cannot be on either of the boards? Is that correct? Does that include the alternates also?
That is correct, and that is outlined in the CRD bylaws, not city process or city bylaws.
Anything else? Any other questions regarding this item? Then that's it. There are no bylaws this evening. We do have one, one thing to release out of in camera, which I will read. Whereas council resolved on February 26th, 2018, to direct the city to unilaterally authorize an encroachment agreement with the owners of 3546 Turner Lee Place, authorizing the use of the boulevard for the existing retaining wall. And whereas the owners were given two opportunities to sign and return the encroachment agreement January 31st, 2018, and April 12th, 2018, or the city would remove the retaining wall from the boulevard without further notice. And whereas, as of November 26th, 2018, the signed encroachment agreements has not been received by the city, now therefore the council of the City of Callwood reaffirms the February 26th, 2018 resolution, and direct staff to remove the retaining wall from the boulevard at 3546 Turner Lee Place without further notice, and that the owners be billed to the costs incurred by the city. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.